Good evening and welcome to the June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Regular Board of Education Meeting. And we'll start with a roll call. Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Sally?
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Nickram?
Here. Alrighty, and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, and at every board meeting, we read the vision and mission statement. And the vision statement is achieving distinction in all that we do. And mission statement is cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. Alrighty, and moving on with comments from the audience on agenda and non-agenda items. And just a reminder, if you approach the podium, please state your name and address. And each participant is limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody here tonight?
We did. None submitted this evening.
Alrighty, and we're moving on to the consent agenda.
Yes, Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all board members in advance to assure for an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening, we have item A, minutes from the May nineteen, two thousand and twenty-two Regular Meeting. Item B, personnel appointment, transfer, resignation, and retirement requests. This evening, we have the following appointments. Madison Minx, one point O F T E math at Fort Atkinson High School. Erica Kinkst, one point O F T E math teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Chelsea Wrestler, one point O special education teacher at Purdy Elementary School. Kimmy Quant, one point O F T E behavior interventionist at Berry Elementary. And Stephen Fights, one point O technology education teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. We'd also have the following resignation requests this evening. Michael Knudsen, one point O F T E fourth grade teacher at Berry Elementary. Megan Cooper, one point O F T E Spanish teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School. Katie Schneider, one point O math teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Natalie Elfering, one point O technology education teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Rebecca Brown, one point O F T E early childhood teacher at Purdy Elementary. Nakia Skier, one point O, uh, one point O fourth grade teacher at Purdy Elementary. And Jessica Tate, one point O F T E family and consumer ed teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Also, a resignation request effective June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two be accepted upon satisfaction of liquidated damages for failure to perform in the amount of one thousand dollars for Bradley Geffert, one point O F T E associate principal at Fort Atkinson High School. Then we have item C, gifts to the school district. This evening, the board is happy to accept the following donation. Donation from Beaver Tree of Five Yards of Mulch to Luther Elementary Courtyard in approximate value of two hundred and fifty dollars. And a donation of, um, from Jack Barr, rather, a second grade student at Berry Elementary, of two hundred and fifty dollar proceeds from a lemonade stand at Berry Elementary Art, for the elementary, Berry Elementary Art Department. Item D, budget transfer requests. Item E, payment of district bills and the treasurer's report. And that is your consent agenda this evening.
Alright, thank you. Would anyone like to pull out anything for further discussion or have any further questions at all?
Mr. President, I would ask that, uh, number A, the minutes, uh, be voted on separately in as much as I wasn't here last meeting.
Alright, we can do that. So what we'll do is we will pull that out of the consent agenda and just vote on items B through E. Um, and then we'll move the item A down to, um, the next section here. Alright, does anyone have any questions on B through E on our consents agenda tonight?
Make a motion to approve.
Alright.
All second.
Alright, we have a motion approved by Ms. Rogers and a second by Ms. Reynolds. And that is a...
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sally?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. Alright, and we will move on to the minutes. And I'm sure everyone's had a chance to read the minutes from the May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Regular Board Meeting. And we will, uh, need a separate motion on that or discussion on that, obviously.
So I'll, um, move to approve the meeting minutes from the May nineteenth meeting.
Alright.
All second.
Alright, we have a motion from Ms. Sally, a second from Ms. Bookta, and a roll call.
That one would just be a voice vote.
A voice vote. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and those opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you. Alright, moving on to section five would be a strategic plan update.
Yes, again, good evening. I think it was actually a year ago this month that we rolled, um, the new strategic plan out. Um, and I'm excited this evening that, um, in our effort to have a strategic plan that was more encompassing of the total operation of the district, um, that this evening's presentation actually encompasses six distinct items on your agenda this evening. Each of them finding a very logical and, um, meaningful place within the strategic plan. So as, um, Mr. Nickram shared with us at the beginning of the meeting, of course, our vision and mission. Um, and then these three, uh, goal areas that we have been working hard on um, over the course of the past fourteen months or so, um, related to high performance and inclusive, um, culture of growth and then community distinction. So this evening, related to an inclusive culture of growth, as you are aware, one of our efforts related to the new strategic plan is to more regularly share updates, examples, and areas of focus rather than our three main goal areas. Next month, we will be focusing on the goal area of distinction as we celebrate just a few of our successes from our students, staff, and the district as they have achieved them over the past several months. This evening, I would like to provide the board and our larger one-fourth community with just a glimpse of a few of our efforts related to an inclusive, uh, inclusive growth, um, community and culture of growth. Easy to say, right? Uh, and included in that inclusive culture of growth and being responsive to our learner and community needs is the consideration of facilities and their accessibility, their status, and safety. And as I think all recall, in November of two thousand and twenty-one, the school district of Fort Atkinson asked voters to participate in a community survey to evaluate the district's financial and facility needs and then to consider possible solutions and offer their feedback. Understanding that much has changed over the past several months, um, in May of two thousand and twenty-two, we again asked residents to complete a follow-up survey to provide additional input, um, given how much things had changed since we had polled our public back in November. As in November, we continued to work with the Donovan Group to help facilitate this community engagement effort. And I am pleased, uh, this evening to once again introduce Joe Donovan and Perry Hipner from the Donovan Group. Uh, Joe Donovan is the Donovan Group's founder and president. Uh, in addition to working with hundreds of schools and districts on their communications efforts, Joe has advised state superintendents, state legislators, mayors, and members of Congress around the country. Perry Hipner works with, um, public schools and districts in the Wisconsin and Illinois on surveys, polling, focus groups, and data analysis services as part of the Donovan Group Intelligence. So at this time, I'd be happy to turn things over to these gentlemen.
Joe said he'd be my wingman tonight, so. Alright, nice to be back. I remember when we were here a few months ago. It was dark by this time when we do this presentation. I kind of like it now when it's lighter. I was telling Cory, though, I, I almost went to the carnival instead of coming here to meet them. I can tell you first that the districts all over the state are also engaging their communities regarding potential operational referendum questions in November and/or facility bond capital questions. I was in Onalaska presenting results and analysis to their school board on Monday night and also put together videos for the Adams Friendship Area and Belleville school boards as they also had meetings that night. I'm waiting for Joan to clone, clone me so I can start being in more than one place at once, so. If we go to the next slide, Joe. So we always like to start with this slide. You may remember from the last time. We always begin by reminding districts that our survey is not a scientific sample. As such, it should be treated as qualitative data that is similar to data from a large number of focus groups. Because we used a convenience sample, it would be methodologically inappropriate to carry out a regression analysis or attempt to calculate errors. So saying like, for example, plus or minus three or four on any of these questions. However, over the years, we have found our community survey results to be very indicative of what residents believe about the questions and statements provided. For example, we did community surveys for a handful of Wisconsin districts that put questions on the April, two thousand and twenty-two ballot. And the results of those questions mirrored for each district what we found in their respective surveys. I think, Joe, two or three of the districts we thought were going to pass referendum questions, and they did. And two or three, it was pretty apparent that there wasn't a solution that the community was going to support, and they did not. So you, so again, I, we feel really good about the results that we're able to bring forward tonight. Next one. You will see that we kept the survey open for two weeks, about the same as we did last time. A postcard was mailed to each household in the district encouraging adults to take the survey, giving them a Q R code to access the survey, locations where hard copies were available for pickup and return, and letting them know when the survey would be open. The district did a good job of sending out emails and using its social media and other communication tools to continually remind residents while the survey was open. Before we look at the data, I will remind everyone that we set up three groupings. The first column on some of the future slides shows the percentages for all one thousand and eighteen residents who completed the survey. The second column shows the percentages for the three hundred and forty-eight residents who are part of what we call a comparison group. That is current parents of preschool, and current parents of preschool or school-aid students, employees or students are not part of that comparison group. So it's people who don't have that direct affiliation with your district. The comparison group does include parents of former district students along with grandparents of current students. We also have added a third column, and we've been doing that since March, which is new and provides a weighted average of those who are affiliated with a district and the comparison group. In most districts, and I don't think Fort Atkinson is any different, about seventy percent of your eligible voters do not have an affiliation with the district, which is why we give that group a point seven weight when we're doing this. Those who are affiliated with the district get a point three oh weight. So when we look at that third column, that's where that comes from. Next slide, Joe. In most cases, the percentages of respondents who strongly agree or agree to this statement, so I believe the school district's most urgent financial needs must be addressed now, tends to be higher than the support for specific solutions. Makes sense, right? You ask the question generally, and then when you start talking about the solutions, sometimes people might say, I, I want, I want something different. Or once we show tax impact, which we did in November, they say, I like the solution, but I can't afford it right now, that sort of thing. This statement often sets the ceiling for support for specific solutions. You will note, support has actually increased since November, two thousand and twenty-one to address the district's most urgent financial needs. That is encouraging. As we often witness, the all respondent group, which is parent-heavy, is almost always more likely to agree or strongly agree that needs must be addressed now. However, to have more than sixty percent support from the comparison group and sixty-five percent support from the weighted group is again encouraging for what we're, what we might be doing moving forward. Next slide, Joe. So, nearly sixty-four percent of all respondents indicated they would definitely or probably support an operational referendum question in November. The weighted category still has nearly fifty-six percent support, which bodes well for the district if the right amount and tax impact are determined. I will tell you, when we've talked with other districts, sometimes we're asked, so, when you, when you do a survey now, and let's say the election in this case is in November, can we see those numbers change? Most definitely. You know, the reality is, is you have an opportunity to engage your community over the next few months. So hopefully, those numbers will go up a bit. How much? Joe likes to say five percentage points, you know, is, is a, is a goal, realistic goal to strive for. I can tell you, when I was in Middleton, in both of our referendums, we saw about a ten percent gain. Now, I'm going to give credit to the communications director. That was me. But, um, but the reality, but the reality is, is there is room for growth. So again, that's, that's where the heavy lifting comes in over these next few months for the district. Next one, Joe. Okay, I sound like a broken record. For the people in here who are awfully young or anybody who's watching, you may not know what a record is, but I hope people my age kind of know what it is at least, so. But I'll say it again. In most cases, the percentages of respondents who strongly agree or agree to this statement tends to be higher than the support for any specific solutions we put out there. Again, this statement sets the ceiling for support for specific solutions. So as you can see, more than sixty-seven percent of all respondents and more than fifty percent of the comparison group believe the district's facility needs must be addressed now. But I want to emphasize, the percentages for each of these groups are about six to seven points lower than they were in the November, two thousand and twenty-one survey. Again, is that because of economic turmoil, you know, world, you know, nationwide, worldwide, you know, other factors? Certainly, no doubt about it, but they, they have dropped. Um, the weighted category indicates that nearly fifty-nine percent support this statement. And, and I just want to make this clear again. I believe of our three sets of data, the weighted category is by far the most important. Okay, I, all of them are important. That's the most important. I think that gives you the best indication, snapshot of where your community is right now. Okay? The board and district will need to determine which needs are prioritized, though, based on this, I would say. Next one, Joe. Alright, so now the next couple of slides are going to talk again about those specific solutions, facilities-wise, which you all know about because we've talked about them previously, and they've been part of your committee, you know, work that was done before that. More than fifty-four percent of all respondents would support a referendum to build a new middle school. Although that percentage drops, you can see to thirty-six point five percent for the comparison group. Just more than forty-six percent of the weighted group definitely or probably would support this option. So you have some people, and it was certainly apparent in the qualitative data, you know, those open-ended questions we offered, who feel very strongly that they want a new middle school right now. The challenge is going to be one of, if you look at that third category, you're not there right now. You're not, you're not there, and even if we get that five percentage points, we're barely there. Okay? Next one, Joe. Um, you will see there is a more than a four percent drop among all respondents and nearly a four percent drop among the comparison group to build a new middle school and address secured entrances at all district buildings. And I'm saying, from November to now, we've seen it, seen that drop. And again, I think that goes back to, it's not that people disagree with things, there's just a lot of uncertainty for folks and nervousness. Next one, Joe. You already did it, alright. You will again notice there is a drop from the November, two thousand and twenty-one survey. This time, it's more than five percentage points lower for all respondents and more than four percentage points lower for the comparison group. And again, this is to do all of Phase Two right now, to do all of it. The fact that a higher percentage supported this option over the previous two, however, indicates there is a portion of your community that wants to see the district addressed all components of Phase Two now, which is what I just said a couple of slides ago. Next one, Joe. Okay, so Marissa suggested we kind of put all these together. It sort of provides the same information. Alright, so just again, want to, want to spend, keep it up there for a second. And you can notice, again, we're above fifty percent support among all respondents. But again, the problem with only looking at that one is that it's parent-heavy on a survey. And even if every parent comes out to vote, that still leaves a lot of your community who may not support it or says, I would if I could afford it right now. Okay, next one, Joe. And this was a new question. We did not have this in the November, two thousand and twenty-one survey. So we asked all respondents, we asked on the survey again, if you could rank those three pieces of Phase Two. And, and in all three cases, all respondents, the comparison group, and the weighted group believe urgent elementary maintenance should be the top priority for the district, followed very closely by secured entrances at all buildings. Building a new middle school has a lot of support. I mean, I'm not, it's not to say twenty-nine point four to thirty point four is not a lot of support, but that still lacks five to seven percentage points behind the other needs, according to your survey participants. And then our last slide, Joe. And I've got a few things I'll say, even though there's not much up on that one. I can tell you the survey results are encouraging. We have regular meetings with Rob, Jason, Marissa, and members of the C G Schmidt and Plunkett Research Team. When we met earlier this month, we were all struck by how close many of the data points are and the continued support of so many in the community, even with all the economic turmoil. Joe and I are often asked what we would recommend to a district, and we always remind administrators and school board members, trust your data. Okay? It was fantastic to see more than a thousand residents complete the survey. That's a barrier Marissa has wanted to surpass for quite some time. So I'm glad we did it. More her, more her than me, that's for sure. A thousand and eighteen responses may not seem like a lot, but it does represent more than thirty-eight percent of your K twelve student population. The surveys we have done for Wisconsin school districts in two thousand and twenty-two have ranged in participation from eighteen to forty percent. So you're on the very high percentage in terms of participation. So again, I would tell you that this is really, it's good data, it's strong data, it's accurate data.
And Joe, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I figured you'd say that, so. But we're open for questions if you have any.
Was, was question number twelve on the previous one? I didn't see the comparison of whether those percentages went up or down in terms of the ranking.
So they were not on the November, two thousand and twenty-one. So this, that was a new question the district decided to ask. And I think more just again, if, if the approach is one of that we can't do all of Phase Two right now, what should we prioritize based on what the community's saying?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you laying this out in a simplistic way for us. I mean, based on, and obviously we had time to review this previous two-year presentation, but, um, I was kind of able to shed some questions out. But I was, I was happy to see with that forty-six percent, I believe, is kind of, you know, if we're able to gain maybe five percent, that's still threading the needle pretty thin, um, with that. So I was happy to see that we were, we were pretty consistent all the way throughout the, the survey. Um, but again, I appreciate the layout of it.
In previous districts, when you've, when you've done surveys six months apart, um, I mean, you can survey until, you know, forever. Um, is two surveys pretty, you know, seeing that level of consistency? Do you feel comfortable that in your past experience that we did another survey in September that you would start to see that same consistency? And I know I'm asking you to be a fortune teller, but.
So I always, I always say, you know, surveys are a snapshot in time. And, and the reality is, is it's hard to look into the crystal ball and know what September's going to look like. If, if all of a sudden the economy started improving, you know, the numbers would probably look different if we did another survey in September. I will also add, we don't have a lot of districts that ask to do two surveys. Usually they, usually they want to do one, and they feel like at that point they're going to make their decision. And the key there is probably not to do your two of it, survey too far out in front of when the election's going to happen. You know, the data at some point becomes, I won't say obsolete, but a lot less meaningful if you're doing a survey more than a year out in front. And I think because we did it in November, we felt it was important and also knowing all the uncertainty going on to do another one.
Thank you.
And also, just given the timeline that the board needs to address potential referendum decisions and then questions being in August, you know, we really felt like this was a sweet spot in time, um, particularly still having students in school and having sort of the community more, um, in school mode than summer mode as well.
Yeah, if we didn't waited to do it this summer, we've got a couple of districts right now that are asking us to do it now. We're a little worried about the response rate. Just people are busy. It's hard to find. It's not that it's hard to find time to do it, it's just, you know, it's not as much a priority as it is a focus during the school year.
Well, thank you very much, Joe, and Perry, and Marissa as well for all of your work.
Thanks, Rob. Am I bringing up Jason next? I feel like I'm doing the handoff, so.
Yeah, so, um, you're going to see a bit now of Mr. Demarat, our Director of Business Services. Um, his first portion this evening is the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary budget.
Alright, good evening. Tonight, I will share the first draft of the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary budget. I'll follow that up with a presentation regarding a proposed direction for our November referendum planning as this budget is built with long-term financial planning in mind to work towards a possible referendum. First, let me share where we stand with next year's budget at this point. I'm going to begin our conversation this evening with a reminder of where we began back in January and February as we learned about high inflationary impacts related to compensation and health insurance. In an effort to mitigate those impacts and set us up for the future, the board confirmed that we should move forward with these strategies and is important that we revisit them at this time. Our strategies included providing a, uh, competitive compensation and benefit package for next year for our employees, um, rightsizing our staff to align to enrollment, looking at all vacancies for attrition or restructuring, looking at programming to prioritize return on investment and look at for strategic abandonment opportunities, engaging the community in potential capital investment of a new middle school and addressing urgent security and maintenance needs, continuing to plan for an operational referendum, and then leveraging the one-time Esser federal funds to cover shortfalls and make strategic investments. As you'll see throughout this presentation this evening, each and every one of these strategies has been leveraged in our planning for next year and beyond. When thinking about the annual budget process, while there are certain points in the year that the public will receive information at a board meeting about the budget, the budgeting process is a year-round process. As we're finalizing the current year's budget in the fall, the administrative team is already beginning to meet to discuss the following year's budget. That team meets monthly throughout the year to focus on resourcing student success by leveraging all of our resources to do more for students. Once the current year's budget is set in late October, a long-range financial projection is presented to the board in December or January. With that information as a backdrop, the administrative team then presents compensation and other budget recommendations to the board at the April meeting. Based on the board's decisions, the first draft of the upcoming year's budget is presented in June and a second draft in July. The budget that's approved by the Board of Education in July is then brought to the local elect, local electorate at the annual meeting in August. Finally, the annual cycle concludes with approval of a final budget and tax levy by the board in late October. What is shown here is a summary of the projection from our financial planning leading up to the referendum in April of two thousand and twenty. The referendum that was approved by our community covers fiscal years two thousand and twenty-one through twenty-three. As you can see, next year is the final year of that referendum. And as always, we plan for a deficit in that final year that is offset by the surplus in the first year of the referendum as the referendum amount is flat over the course of the three years, but expenses continue to increase. In two thousand and nineteen, twenty, when we planned the current referendum, we were projecting a deficit of almost one point three million dollars for next year, even with revenue increases of a hundred and fifty dollars per student. As I just shared, that projection from our referendum planning almost two and a half years ago included a hundred and fifty dollars per student each year of, uh, the current biennium. We can see here the history of these two revenue increases over the past fifteen-plus years. Over the last decade, any increase in these revenues has been hit or missed based on decisions made as part of the state budget process. As opposed to getting seventy-five per pupil in each of the revenue limit and per pupil aid increases, in the current state budget, we see no allowable increase in revenue from the state for local public schools. The state did not increase revenue of public schools with the thought that the one-time federal funds we're receiving could be used to offset any recurring operational increases, something that we as local districts try to stay away from as a practice to ensure recurring resources support recurring expenses for our programs and services. Using our federal funds to offset this revenue shortfall was one of the strategies I mentioned earlier that we are going to use next year. What's shown here is a breakdown of our district revenue into the various sources. One item of note is that under the state-imposed revenue limit, in the past, our state aid and tax revenue sources were typically fairly even when looking at percentages. As you can see here, state aid is projected for next year to be forty-six percent of revenue with taxes being only thirty-eight and a half percent of revenue. This is a result of the action taken as part of the state budget where a large increase in state aid for next year was approved to meet federal requirements, but no corresponding increase in state allow- but no corresponding increase in state allowable revenue was approved. Therefore, all of this new state aid simply goes to offset property taxes rather than being funding for the classroom. You'll see later how this will factor into our referendum planning. To illustrate just how much of an impact the state budget decisions have on our local revenues, we can see that all but nine point nine five percent of our forty one million dollar budget is dictated directly by the state through the revenue limit, state general aid and state categorical aids. Of the remaining two slices shown here, interdistrict transfers is almost exclusively open enrollment revenue and the remainder of the other sources are local fees and grants, which include the one time COVID federal relief funds. On the expenditure side of the budget, we can see the various major categories, including salaries and wages, benefits, purchase services, non capital and capital objects, insurance, transfers and other miscellaneous expenditures. As a service business, about seventy eight percent of our budget is spent on personnel to provide the service of educating our community's children. The next largest section of the budget is purchase services, which includes everything from transportation and utilities to substitute teachers and open enrollment payments to other districts. Let's now take a closer look at the expense assumptions that were being built into this preliminary budget as they largely coincide with the strategies I mentioned earlier that we were planning to leverage. The board approved a full CPI salary and wage increase plus market adjustments for our one fourteen members in April. We also will be transitioning all active employees that take health insurance to the HSA plan in an effort to mitigate the large renewal increase without putting more costs for that plan on our employees and eating into that wage increase. Also in April, the board approved adding two new behavior interventionists at the elementary level. However, these are budget neutral additions as they'll be paid for through federal funding in attrition of special education support positions. You'll also recall that one of the strategies we're leveraging is to evaluate all vacancies for possible attrition or restructuring along with prioritizing academic return on investment and recognizing opportunities for strategic abandonment. These strategies have been implemented since this winter and will continue moving forward through the attritions you see here on the screen. While some of these positions are outright attritions due to matching student enrollment, some are also restructuring. One example example you'll hear more about tonight is related to the middle school technology education position and the implementation of a STEM curriculum with classroom teachers in place of what existed in the past. Overall, we have seven full time positions so far that have been attritioned as a result of retirements or resignations, and we have one other position that is currently being explored in further detail. Another strategy that we are not only implementing in the upcoming budget, but also have implemented in the current fiscal year is to use our one time federal COVID relief funds or ESER funds to offset operational deficits and provide mental health services and supports. The use of these funds in this way aligns directly with what the community shared they would like us to use these funds for as part of the survey earlier this year. As you can see here, we have eleven and a half total certified positions being funded by these federal funds next year, which helps to manage our operational costs, but something we will need to reevaluate as this one time federal funding ends in a couple of years. Next, let's look at where all of this leaves the overall budget and tax levy. On the left, we see the current year's budget with a surplus of three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars after we moved some current year expenses onto those federal COVID relief funds. In looking at next year, we're currently budgeting for a deficit of just under one million dollars, which was planned as we'll be entering the third year of our operational referendum, as I mentioned earlier. If you'll recall on the slide I shared earlier, we were projecting a deficit of almost one point three million dollars a couple of years ago, even with revenue increases. I'll also point out that due to declining enrollment, our revenue decreases by one point eight seven percent while our expenses increased by only one point three one percent. Again, a reminder that that one point three one percent increase includes a five point seven one percent wage and salary increase so our team members can keep up with the inflationary environment we're all experiencing. If we think back to January and February, when we were first learning about the large inflationary impact and health insurance increases, the projection at that time had our deficit at almost two million dollars. The strategies that we have implemented over the past few months have dropped that projected deficit by a million dollars, all while taking care of our team members. It's important to take a moment at this point to acknowledge the work of our one four team across the district in making this happen as they work to restructure and attrition positions to leverage these strategies, all while working to improve the education we provide and student outcomes to meet our strategic goals. It's difficult work, but meaningful and impactful as well. As a result of all this work, let's look at the preliminary tax levy projection. If we look at the first line here, we can see that we're projecting a tax levy in the general fund of about two million dollars less than twenty one twenty two. That two million dollars is a result of about an eight hundred thousand dollar decrease due to enrollment and about a one point two million and about one point two million dollars in new state aid without a revenue limit increase. This is one of the factors that allows for a possible referendum in November with a minimal tax rate increase. The other major factor that is part of the referendum planning is that our referendum approved debt will be completely paid off next year, which is why the tax levy for referendum debt all but disappears. We go from a tax levy for this debt of one point four million all the way down to fifty thousand dollars. All of this results in a total tax levy of sixteen million dollars, three and a half million dollars less than last year, which translates to a projected tax rate of eight dollars and seventy two cents, a twenty percent decrease from the current year. All of this has been part of our referendum planning, so let me illustrate this impact a little more. If we look at the tax levy rate history, we can see each of our recent three year operational referenda shown here in alternating colors of blue and green going back over a decade. This coming year's projected tax rate of eight dollars and seventy two cents is well below where we have been over the past decade or more due to the increase in state aid without a corresponding revenue limit increase and the retirement of our debt. This drop is what creates the room for a referendum with minimal impact to the tax rate, as you can see illustrated here. In recent years, the state has approved funding private school vouchers with public tax dollars. The cost of those private school vouchers used in the local school district by the community members is passed through the local public school district's tax levy, resulting in increased local taxes beyond the taxes used by the public school. You can see here, shown in orange, the impact that private school vouchers have had on the local tax rate. Illustrated here, you can see the increase in private school vouchers over the past few years. At this time, we're projecting no increase for next year as we get no data whatsoever from the state about vouchers or other than what to put on the property taxes. Therefore, we have no way of knowing what to project for next year. Should there be an increase in private school vouchers next year, there would be a corresponding increase in taxes to pay for those vouchers. It should be noted, excuse me, that the increase you see here does not mean that students are leaving our district to attend private schools with vouchers. While there may be a few that do, the increase here is related to more families becoming eligible for and taking advantage of the state private school voucher program, even if they attended those private schools without vouchers in the past or never attended our public schools. The final factor that we always check in on related to the budget is our open enrollment trend. As you can see here, the gap between the numbers of students leaving our district compared to coming into our district has closed in recent years. However, for next year, we're projecting that gap may widen just a bit. Finally, I want to, I just want to share a little bit more about the major upcoming milestones and the timeline to craft our budget for next year. On July first, we'll get our state aid estimate, and at the next board meeting, you would approve a preliminary budget that would then go to the annual meeting in August. On September sixteenth, we have our fall pupil count, and the state uses that to certify our state aid by October fifteenth. Then, based on that information, the board determines a tax levy by November first. One wrinkle this year is that November eighth is election day, and so if there's a referendum on the ballot, it would affect the tax levy that's determined. And whatever the result of that would be would be sent to the municipalities by November tenth. That concludes my presentation of the first draft of the budget, and before I move on to discussing the possible referendum this fall, I'll pause to take any questions or entertain any conversation about the budget.
If the referendum fails, will we have to redo the budget?
No, so the way it'll work is you could end up approving up to four different tax levies by November first. So you could approve one where, so if there were a capital question, operational question on the ballot, be two questions, so you could approve one tax levy with both of them failing, one tax levy with the operational passing but the capital failing, one tax levy with the capital passing but the operational failing, and then one tax levy with both passing. So you'd approve all four of those by by November first. Then whatever the results of the election are, that's the tax levy that would go to the municipalities.
Go ahead.
Yep. So you said a lot of things. A lot of things. It's all great stuff. I just wanted to pull out a couple of points that I wanted you to just emphasize and just make sure it's real clear. The ESER funds, I mean, three million dollars, it's a lot of money, four and a half, I think, total, right? Can you talk a little bit, just explain again a little bit about recurring costs versus using those one time funds and how that, how that was utilized and how the strategy for it is smart or not smart using that for recurring costs?
Sure. So as I mentioned, almost eighty percent of our budget, our operational budget is staff, which is salaries and benefits and recurring costs unless positions are cut from year to year. So the state, knowing that we were getting this large influx of federal money, one time federal money, said through their budget process that they wouldn't give us any recurring revenue increase and that we should plug the hole with this one time money and then wait to see what happens in the twenty three twenty five biennial budget. So a lot of districts around the state have kind of been backed into the same corner and are doing the same thing and using the the federal funds for recurring increases. We did it a little different here in Fort Atkinson. Coming out of the pandemic in April of twenty, the board approved some mental health services and supports positions, and that was going to go into our regular operational budget and be part of future planning. And so those were in effect for this current year, and then when we found out what the state was telling us, we determined and through community survey that those were the positions that we should be using the federal ESER funds on in order to make it through this two year stretch until the next state budget.
Thank you.
So you were, you were saying in the two thousand twenty two twenty three preliminary budget, our deficit is what?
Uh, just under a million dollars.
And our pri, our private school vouchers cost us.
A million dollars.
So.
But it's basically we're a pass through.
Correct.
Of the, so, yeah, if private school vouchers didn't exist, we'd still have
We would have that.
The deficit, but it increases our taxes
Sure.
locally in order to pay for those vouchers.
Okay. Thanks for what I'm saying.
Any other questions on the budget before I move on? Okay. So as a result of the outcome of our preliminary budget work and the year long community conversation we have had that was just shared by the Donovan Group, I now want to share with you what we are proposing for a possible referendum scenario this fall. We want to share this proposal so the board may give us direction on what to bring back to you in August for final approval of the ballot questions for November. In order to have any referendum questions on the November ballot, they would need to be approved by the board in August. This will give us two months to work through the final details with legal counsel on drafting any questions you may desire to approve for the ballot in November. On the capital referendum side, I'll take you back to what was presented last October as a result of the facility advisory committee's work, and then we can discuss what is ultimately being recommended at this time. Back in October, we shared that we would have three phases to our master long range facilities plan. The first phase was the work that is currently underway at the high school related to mechanical issues and energy efficiency upgrades to replace some failing systems in that building. The second phase is what we have been investigating and gathering feedback on, which was related to a possible new middle school, secure entries at the rest of our buildings and urgent maintenance at the four elementary schools. The third phase for some time in the future was to determine what to do with the elementary schools to address long term maintenance needs and modernized learning environments. To summarize that Phase Two plan, we were investigating throughout this year by building. At the high school, we would look at a secure entry sequence and continue the projects that were ongoing. At the four elementary schools, we would look at secure entry sequences, urgent maintenance needs and additional pressing maintenance and mechanical needs to effectively operate each of those four school buildings until Phase Three could be determined at some point in the future. At the middle school, we were looking at the potential for a replacement building at the high school site and options for what to do with the existing building. We were also exploring community partnerships throughout this year as well. Overall, Phase Two was estimated to be in the forty nine million to fifty nine million dollar range last fall when it was shared out. As we all know, since last October, a lot has changed. Along with everything we learned during our engagement with the community, there have been national economic challenges related to inflation and future economic uncertainty, and there has also been a city referendum that was passed that influenced things locally. As a result, we're going to recommend a modified long range capital plan that we believe listens to the concerns of our community stakeholders. This modified capital referendum plan is essentially a further phasing of Phase Two of the long range master plan. What we are recommending is at the high, at the high school, we still do the secure entry sequence and continue the work that has been ongoing. We also believe we need to address the traffic flow in the next year or so at that site. Traffic flow was a major concern we heard from the community this year, and with the new neighborhood development starting sometime in twenty twenty three, we have the opportunity to adjust traffic flow on our high school campus as that neighborhood comes online and is connected to our property. This will also allow the communities to see that this concern has been addressed. At the elementary schools, we would still do the secure entry sequences and would address all maintenance and mechanical needs to have those buildings last for approximately ten more years until Phase Three of the master plan can be enacted. It is important to note that this will not change the educational layout, classrooms or environment. Rather, it would address what is necessary to effectively operate those four schools as is for the next ten years or so. The largest change in our recommendation is related to the middle school. While we acknowledge that there is part of our community that would like us to move ahead with building a new middle school at the high school site this year, in our long, in our year long conversation with the larger community, it has become apparent that the time for this might not be right and that our operational needs are of highest priority right now. As a result, we're recommending not to ask the community to support a new middle school at this time. Rather, we would create a highly modified secure entry sequence at the current middle school and address urgent maintenance need, urgent maintenance needs at that building so that it can function for the next five years. We would only put dollars that are absolutely necessary to make that happen into the current building as we would transparently share with the community that we will be back in November of twenty twenty six to ask for that new middle school building. Along the way, we would look to solidify community partnerships around that new building. This revised phasing of the long range capital plan would be a total estimated cost of twenty two million dollars that would go on this November's ballot. Alongside that capital referendum this fall would be an operational referendum to meet our operational needs for the next four years. Let me now address the reasoning behind this modified recommendation. First and foremost, we are listening to our community and the feedback we have received over the course of this school year. Through two community surveys and several engagement sessions, it has become apparent that the current economic climate at the national, state and local levels has changed since the original plan was presented in October, and this has raised concern. Between inflationary pressures and the referendum that was passed by the city in April, it has become a question as to whether this is the best time to be asking for a new school. With no immediate end in sight for these inflationary pressures or the economic uncertainty, we feel it may be best to address our community's concern by further phasing these projects and putting the middle school off until things settle down a bit more with these issues. I do want to, want to acknowledge again that we recognize that there are some in the community that wish for us to move forward with a new middle school this year, and we want to assure that group that it is our intention to come back with a proposal to the community for that new building around November twenty twenty six as this is the same master plan that was shared last October, that the As this is the same master plan that was shared last October that the Facilities Advisory Committee developed, we're just phasing it a bit more given what is happening in our world and community right now. Between now and then, we have a gubernatorial election this fall and a new biennial budget that will provide us a little bit clearer information as well. However, right now for this year, our operational needs are a primary concern for both us and the community as illustrated through the survey. So we want to make sure we can address those as well as our one-time federal funding dries up without any indication from the state that they will grant us more ongoing revenue at this time. So let me summarize what the overall revised referendum plan proposal would look like. As a result of a full retirement of all referendum debt, plus a large increase in state aid without a corresponding revenue limit increase, there's room for both an operational and capital referendum this fall with minimal impact to the tax rate. What we are proposing is a twenty-two million dollar capital referendum funded through twenty-year bonds that would put secure entries in all six buildings, address urgent maintenance needs at all six buildings, and address traffic flow issues at the high school as the neighborhood next to it gets developed. On the operational side, we're currently estimating that with the twenty-two million dollar capital referendum and targeting the current tax rate, we could get through twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six with a two-point-seven million dollar recurring referendum, a four-point-four million dollar non-recurring referendum in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, and a five-point-five million dollar non-recurring referendum in twenty-five, twenty-six. I'll put a caveat with all of these numbers that these are projections right now and we will get even better information in July when we get our state aid estimate. So these numbers may change a bit before final approval. I'll also note that these dollar amounts would allow us to get through twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six and would be the maximum amount we would levy in these years. Should financial circumstances change and not all of these funds are needed, the board could consider not to tax for the full amount of these referendums based on the financial circumstances at the time. Along the way, over the next four years, we'll continue to right-size our staff to enrollment changes and will plan for and message for a November twenty-twenty-six referendum for a new middle school. During that four-year time, should our financial situation change, the board could also decide to manage the debt from this twenty-two million dollar referendum this year in such a way to create more flexibility come twenty-twenty-six and asking the community for a new middle school. To summarize everything you heard tonight in a graphical format, you may recognize this from presentations earlier this year. The blue line is where we started our work this year in January with what was projected for our long-range financial situation. In February, we received news of inflation in the CPI increase along with our health insurance increase, which resulted in the situation getting worse as represented by the orange line. Since February, we implemented the strategies I mentioned earlier this evening to not only get back to where we started, but to move all the way to the green line and have a budgeted surplus in the current year and trim the million dollars off of next year's deficit. Should the plan we presented this evening regarding the referendum be put before the voters in November and pass, it would result in the yellow line where we are able to get through twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six operationally with a minimal tax rate impact. So that was a lot of information that, that we've shared to this point in the evening. What we as administration and a planning team are seeking is some direction from the board on how you would like us to move forward in our planning. Any referendum question that might be on the November ballot would need to be approved by the board at your August meeting. Between now and then, we would work with our attorney to draft those questions. We would also plan to dig into even more detail about this proposal with you at your July board meeting. The question before the Board of Education at this point would be which direction you would like us to pursue between now and then. We're happy to answer any questions you may have and welcome any discussion the board would like to have about what was presented.
So the referendum, we're going to be asking for twenty-two million?
Twenty-two million in capital, in debt for capital needs.
I thought I understood that of that twenty-two million dollars, some of that would be used for our operational costs?
No, it would be twenty-two million dollars in capital, yep, in debt.
Okay, and would there be additional requests for operational funds?
Yeah, the operational funds would be on top of, yep, on top of that.
That would be on, on top of that?
Yep.
Again, maybe I didn't understand your answer to my previous question. If the referendum fails, where does that leave us as far as our budget is concerned?
If the referendum fails this fall for next year, we would have that million-dollar deficit, but it would be the following year where it would be upwards of three to four million dollars.
And that would be funded how?
That would either be funded through reductions or through a possible spring of twenty-twenty-three operational referendum for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Can we borrow that as well?
Uh, we can't borrow debt for operations.
So you're asking us through perhaps a motion?
Uh, no, not, not a motion, just conversation and kind of a general direction from the board of, is this what you want us to explore and go into more detail and with you in July? And then work with our attorneys to look and our consultants to look?
You want an informal consensus?
Yeah.
This makes sense to me. And that's saying a lot.
In talking about a capital referendum and an operations referendum, do those get combined on a ballot as one question or do they become two questions?
They are two questions. One question would be, on the capital side, would be to take out debt. The other one would be for operations.
Is there a limit on how many times you can do a referendum? So if you get the operational on the three-year recurring, can you come in and do another one in that three years or are you limited?
Um, you can only, you can ask two referendums, questions per calendar year. So if we were to do two in November and either both of them fail, we could come back in the spring with a question or two, but that would be it for twenty-twenty-three then. And this would use our limit for twenty-twenty-two.
That three per year, did I hear you?
Two, two questions per year.
Per year.
So we could come back in the spring, but then we would not be able to go back that following November? Just, I, I know you heard that, but just it's part of the planning.
The other part of it as well is we can only go on general election dates. It used to be that a school district could call its own election for a referendum and we're limited to only going on election dates, which means November of twenty-three, there, or fall of twenty-three, there are no elections.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so, so looking at this, I think, I think this makes a lot of sense. We, we learned from the survey that, you know, things, maybe things that I really didn't consider previously is, is important through, you know, if we read through some of like the, what everybody was saying about the traffic flow and things like that, addressing some of those, I think we're being extremely fiscally responsible with, with what we're doing here and continuing to right-size some staffing and, and things like that. This makes a whole lot of sense to me. It kind of checked all my boxes when I was going through this earlier. I, I think it makes sense to kind of gather some information and, and move forward with what we have in front of us here today.
I would like to ask about the twenty-twenty-six. Because you're going to be looking at probably a new school board, unless everyone's planning on continuing to run and run and run until twenty-twenty-six, and then you're sitting with all of us.
It's not that far away.
Could be a new administration, I mean, if Dr. Abbott wins the lottery. And so I'm just, I'm saying, like, is, what's the risk of looking ahead at twenty-twenty-six with knowing that the middle school is in a pretty precarious position?
I think there's always a risk looking beyond the current year. I mean, even if you think about twenty-three, twenty-four would be the first year of the next biennial budget and we have no clue what could be coming in the next state budget. But along the same line, if we have a long-range, ten-year-plus master facilities plan along the way, that's what we work towards and, and plan a few years out at a time and, and work towards that. And as circumstances change, like they did over the course of just this one year, we continue to adapt and change along the way, but we know the direction we're going.
So twenty-twenty-six is the best projection right now saying this is when we would be looking to ask for a new middle school?
Twenty-twenty-six, I think, makes a lot of sense. Again, it's the next, not the next fall referendum, but, or fall election. But if we were to come back, for example, in fall of twenty-four, next year, we'd already be talking about it and working through it and those kinds of things, which doesn't give enough time for things to settle down and get there. But we'll also be able to see, I think, one of the other big factors in this is the neighborhood starting next to the high school. Will, at that point, be two to three years old and people will be able to see the development happening and will know enrollment-wise what might be coming as well.
Um, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. I mean, I think that, you know, this, this takes what is needed and stretches it out. And I think the security at the schools is critical. I think that's important. I think the community would agree that that's important. I mean, in the survey, it was very close as far as the, you know, maintenance at the schools as well as the security. So, I mean, I think this approach makes sense and I really appreciate how you're listening to the community. I mean, don't do a survey if you're not going to do anything with the data. So I really appreciate the listening to the community.
I think it's extremely transparent if we're saying, like, we're, we're, we're sitting here more than four years away saying, hey, this is what we're likely doing, you know? I think everybody can start mentally preparing of what that may or may not look like. And, and as administrative staff, like, really, really put a lot of thought and preparation into what that looks like for November twenty-six, so, or twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah, and everyone's been very, you know, the configuration and so addressing traffic flow, addressing, you know, issues right now and preparing for that makes sense for the high school as it is, but then it makes sense for preparing for the future, so, yeah, I appreciate that.
Even potential community partnerships, whether it's increased connections with Madison College, whether it's working with Fort Healthcare, when you start thinking about, you know, other items or other entities that we talked about throughout the course of the last year. I mean, there will be time, the city's new master plan will be in place and I think there will just be a lot more for us to consider as we truly become a hub with the middle school and high school in that location.
Yeah.
I do want to just pull out one thing, the right sizing staff. I, I want to just make that really clear, what that means. Because right sizing staff for enrollment, that sounds like, are we getting rid of staff? Are we getting rid of programs? Can, I mean, either Dr. Abbott or Mr. Demerath?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, and we, when we, when the board sort of offered the, the decision or the direction that we weren't going to do layoffs this year, we went to this idea of, of attritions. And it, it really is emphasizing to the community that when we have openings, there isn't a posting that follows five minutes later, but instead there is a legitimate study of, of, A, the program, the viability. Are there some opportunities to use that position differently? Or to use that staffing differently? Or to use different staff for that type of programming? What is the enrollment look like presently and then moving forward? Is there efficiencies for us, you know, especially with four elementary schools? You know, are there some things that we can do between schools or by moving things from one place to another or moving staff one place to another? So in the, the list that Mr. Demerath shared earlier, I can guarantee you that we're, I'd almost say countless hours of data gathering and conversation and discussion around the pros, the cons, the impacts, where that puts us, where that might leave us down the road with or without those positions. So in this case, we did not lay off any active staff members and we were able to still make that reduction of, of just around a million dollars as part of the other package that, that he laid out. But as an example, we have a couple of openings now that we're in the process of looking at what would an attrition there mean? What does that look like for students? What does that look like for families? What does that look like for the school community? Is that a short-term or a long-term plan? So it's, it's pretty rigorous, it's pretty involving of a number of different people. It's not just simply a decision that rests with one administrator. And it's also rather time-consuming because we're trying to be as thoroughly, as thorough as we can. I mean, the last thing we want is, you know, a short-term savings with a long-term impact that we weren't anticipating. That's also to say that we have the opportunity then to reevaluate in the future. You know, if we want to, if we want to restructure, if we want to continue to do things differently or if we want to revert to where we were, those are all options for us moving forward as well. So, you know, we're just, we really want to move away from the idea of if we have it, we, we automatically get to keep it. Because really the question should be what is it that we're doing next within our means and with what we have to improve teaching and learning? And sometimes that's different than what we've been currently doing.
The other long-term factor that we are planning for is those eleven and a half positions that I mentioned that are on federal funds, one-time funds, that when that funding dries up in a couple of years, how can we fold those back into the budget if those are programs we want to maintain? Then there need, perhaps needs to be attritions over here in order to fold those back in operationally and sustain them in the regular budget.
And I'm assuming most, if not all, districts are having very similar conversations.
Absolutely.
So we're, we're, this is nothing that Fort Atkinson is...
No, in fact, over the course of the spring in my circles, everybody was trying to do everything they could to avoid using the one-time funds to fund operations. And it finally got to the point where it was clear the state wasn't going to put any more recurring dollars in through a budget change or anything like that. And everybody now is, the, the big talk out there is the cliff that's coming because all of this one-time fund, these one-time funds go away that we're using for operations.
Yeah.
I would also offer, if you just reflect back on the slide where it showed the room or the place that that referendum can live without a significant impact to the tax rate, that was the action of administration and boards in the past of, of exercising debt defecence and paying ahead to the point that we, that room was created, you know? And I know you all understand, but that didn't just happen. And for us to be doing the, the significant work at the high school that we've been doing with existing budget dollars as opposed to needing to add that into this referendum as well, I think really is a testament to, you know, pretty dedicated short and long-term planning, knowing that these would be elements that we'd need to address in the future.
So I'm going to belabor the point just a little bit longer. So when looking at attrition and looking at strategic abandonment, I mean, those sound like kind of scary words, strategic abandonment. We are not necessarily looking at, there's, there's a question mark at the end, I'm not making a statement, but I want a confirmation or, we're not saying a person is leaving, so therefore what they're teaching, what they've done in the school is going away too. That when we're looking at strategic abandonment, we're looking at the whole program, we're looking at programming, we're looking at how many kids are taking it, what this does for the district. I, I just, I, I want to, I, I guess I want confirmation of that because I think that that's a really critical thing. I mean, right now we're seeing, I mean, across every industry, resignations, hiring, resignations, hiring. I mean, it is a free-for-all out there and it looks scary. So I just want to make sure that, you know, it's very clear to everyone that the district, you know, what the district is doing with that information and with those resignations in terms of programming.
Well, I think it's both.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think there are times where program does change. And whether that is expedited due to staffing shifts sometimes perhaps, sometimes it's not. Later, in this presentation, you'll see a, a change that's coming at the middle school, which was a plan that we had in the works for future years that we were able to expedite by probably two or three years based on a staffing change. So, I mean, that's the opportunity then to change program, strategically abandon what was in order to implement what we know it needs to be in order to build program eventually bigger and better at the high school. So it is scary in that you're talking about less, fewer. But that disruption really causes some dynamic discussion around what needs to be in place so that we can get to where it is that we want to go. Sometimes that, and sometimes that's less, and sometimes we can do with less. The other piece of this, which is a little bit more cut and dried, is, is we, like virtually all public schools right now are seeing declining enrollment. And we're still trying to ride that roller coaster of where is that plateau? Is there a plateau? And when will we find it? Um, and so with fewer numbers comes, you know, some some tough things that you need to talk about, like what is a class size that's too small? What is a class size that's too big? Do you have everything at all of your levels in all of your schools? But those are things that are part of what we've been talking about already and definitely things that we'll continue to talk about.
So I'm, I just, I wanna make it clear that I appreciate the hard work that the district is putting in. Um, especially in light of, you know, resignations and not just wanting to keep. Same old, same old, here are the numbers of, you know, elementary school teachers, so we gotta keep those numbers. That, you know, right sizing, strategic abandonment is strategy and it's looking and it's forward thinking.
Yeah, and I appreciate you highlighting that because I I do think it would be easy for some people to feel that things are far more arbitrary than they are. Um, and they're not, so, so thank you.
Any other?
I do wanna say that I really, I really, really, really appreciate the fact that, you know, we can change. We can update, we can go with what's happening and we can, you know, change the way we're thinking. We can, it's not, we're not stuck doing something. And even in your presentations, you can see that you've realized and looked at data, you've listened to the public and you've done all of these things. You've um, you know, worked through a lot of different scenarios and whatnot and you've changed, you know, we've changed the plan. You've changed what you've thought was gonna be there. Change is not necessarily a bad or an evil or a, oh, scary thing. It can be a really, really good thing. Like especially the, addressing the traffic flow, thank you. That is, to some people, really, really huge, which is great that I see it on here now. Um, and then, you know, solidifying community partnerships, that's huge. We should be a complete community when we're dealing with our children and with our families. We should absolutely be, you know, a community to help our students learn. So I love the fact that we're, we have the ability and we have the amazing people to be able to look at all of this and to be able to do that and to do it smartly. So I appreciate that too.
So to tie a bow on referendum next steps here.
Yes, so so what we are looking is, and I think we're hearing, it is is a consensus that that is um the plan that you would like us to continue to develop um and put a a finer point on for your July meeting. And again, working towards having specific questions that you would then um accept at your August meeting.
Yes.
I'm feeling that.
Yes, is anybody, everybody in agreement on that?
So.
That's where I'm coming from.
All right.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Demerath.
Thank you.
All right. Um, next is part of our strategic plan presentation, um, is the school nursing services update. And um introducing that will be Lisa Hollenberger, our Director of Special Education and Pupil Services.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Abbott. So I'm excited today to um talk a little bit about our school nurse program and kind of what it looks like this year. Um, just as you know, the school nurse program is an integral part of the functioning of the district to keep students healthy and well. Um, we contract our services with um our part community partner, Fort Healthcare, to have the valued services of two full-time registered nurses on site. We started this year with a contract of about twenty-six hundred hours that was fulfilled by one full-time nurse and one part-time nurse. And additional needs not related to registered nurse duties were met through our the um, our district health assistant. With the mid-year retirement of our health assistant, we restructured our services to absorb some of the duties of our health room assistant into existing positions, which gave us the ability to increase our our registered nurse services by about fifteen hours per week. This revisioning of services has enabled us to increase our RN FTE from one point five to two point oh. This has ultimately resulted in more services being provided by the trained experts who get to work with students and within buildings on a daily basis. Our two full-time nurses are here with us this evening. Sarah Neskey has been with us for ten years, right, Sarah? And um Ally Mertens has joined us mid-year, so she's our rookie. But um both are doing an excellent job providing nursing care and services to our students and their families. As a trusted partner and med- um and the medical experts amongst amongst our partnership, Fort Healthcare actually does the hiring of our school nurses and then we interview them to determine fit with our schools. They use the framework for twenty-first century school nursing practices. Our nurses have bachelor's degrees or higher in nursing. They have pediatric experience, including working with students with special needs. They have experience with communicable disease tracking and mitigation, not sure when they would use that. Knowledge of community resources, the ability to develop and review policies, management of chronic conditions and um promotion of healthy behaviors, as well as provision of episodic care. The list goes on, but that's kind of what they do. Um, so in order to ensure that they are providing the best care based on evidence-based practices, they also seek out and intend ongoing professional development each year. Um, after spending the majority of our last two years working through mitigation strategies and contact tracing, this year our efforts were able to refocus on keeping our students in school. Balancing the rec- the recommendations from our various partners, the CDC and our Wisconsin Dev- um Department of Human Services, um, we were eventually able to start handling COVID in a framework that was more aligned and similar to how we handled our other infectious diseases. As with all processes, we lived and learned as we went through it. The nurses were often on the front line, answering questions, fielding frustrations and working through that ever-changing process and procedures that we all encountered during the height and the eventual ebb of COVID. Again, this year, our school health services team with the support of our administrative assistants spent a considerable amount of time speaking with families, students and staff to provide guidance and education regarding their specific COVID situation. While we all know that COVID isn't completely gone, it is through these ongoing efforts of our nurses that the school district is able to continue to function at various levels of outbreak. In their spare time, when they're not working to keep schools open through a pandemic, our nursing staff dealt with um a variety of student health concerns based on um, based on parent-provided information from registration, as well as doctor's orders that um we receive um for treatment. The district has approximately twenty-five, almost twenty-six percent of our total enrollment that has been diagnosed with a chronic health condition. Management and treatment of these conditions include staff training specific to each student, management of medication and ongoing monitoring to ensure overall wellness and health. These are a few duties that our nurses go, um, see to. In addition to training specific to student need, the student, school nurses also provide staff training for safe medication administration, basic first aid, American Heart Association CPR and first aid, stop the bleed and um training for our medical emergency response teams in each building. Medication safety and administration is also an important part of the school nurse role and they administer or oversee the administration of various medications throughout the year. Between scheduled medication administration and administration medic- administering medications as needed, our school nurse team with the help of trained building staff administer over seven thousand doses of medication every year, or this year. If we divided that by our total enrollment, that would equal each nurse seeing every student in the district about three times. So, they're in front of students. Um, some of our celebrations and highlights, our major accomplishments this year, um, was being able to reframe our focus. So moving our practices from those reactive practices that monopolized our time during the pandemic to more of the proactive pieces of our practice that keeps student, keep students healthy, well and in school. So one of the things that we were excited about is we were able to resume in-school health room visits. So we were actually taking care of students for other things. Um, a benefit of our increased FTE resulted in students, um, an increase in student time with our registered nurses. So out of our eight hundred and eighty-eight healthcare room visits, five hundred and eighty-three of those were actually with our nurses. Um, so students were seen by the experts in almost seventy percent of their visits to the health room. We were al- also able to refocus on our diabetic care and education, gaining more independence for those students that um have to manage diabetic care. So while our nurses are on call and they handle much of um what's going on, our ultimate um goal for our students with um, who are managing diabetes is to have them be able to do it independently and we were able to see an increase in that. We were actually able to reactivate our free um services, our more preventative um services. So we were reactivating our free dental screenings in schools. A hundred and forty-five students received free dental screening with twenty percent of those resulting in referrals for ongoing care. And we were also able to reactivate our vision and hearing screenings for students. So eight hundred and eighty-nine students um received free hearing and vision screenings with about ten percent of those resulting in referrals. So as we move into our twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we're excited to actually have um some additional goals that we're working on. We're working on updating and aligning our curriculum. We have some areas that are significantly outdated that we can provide resources around, so we're hopeful to get into that. As well as increasing connections to um our classrooms. So our nurses provide instruction around handwashing, dental education, personal hygiene, human, human growth and development. And um we're able to hopefully get into classrooms more often, as well as our continued health room improvements and updates. Um, we're finding that technology in the nursing world is our friend and what used to be maybe carried out in human form can be actually handled with some technological advances. Um, on some of our practice sides, we're looking at our, conducting all of our annual um emergency medical response team drills by December so that people have that practice. So every, every year, we kind of surprise them with a pretend drill, which they love. And um, we try to get those spread out throughout the year. We're hoping to get those in by December so people feel confident as they're going through the rest of the year. Um, we are looking to align our trainings or the medical trainings that staff have to do within our vector training system so that they're updated by both DPI and local policy. And then we continue to implement systems to decrease medication errors. So of those seven thousand doses that I mentioned earlier, there are some errors which aren't the wrong medication being given to people. But errors continue, like um, actually work within a continuum, so you have a certain amount of time to give the dosage in. And if you're out of that time on either end, it's considered an error. Um, this year, we were in like the mid-teens to high teens in errors, which is down from previous years. Um, but we, our goal is always zero because that's medicine. Second one, mess around with it. So, um, so that's kind of a, the brief skinny update on what our nurse, school nurses services are. Um, if there's any questions, Sarah and Allison are here for your.
Grilling.
Grilling. So I'm, it, yeah, yes.
Well, there's two of them.
There's two of them.
Two of them and six buildings. How are they distributed?
Yeah, good question.
Roll estate.
So Sarah handles the um, the the elementary buildings, the four elementary buildings, and Ally handles the middle school and high school.
You know, are, do they rotate or do they go to uh one school a day or something?
Yeah, go ahead. You guys can talk about your schedules.
So, I kinda, with, we look at what our highest needs are and um kind of push ourselves to that particular building. So I was at Berry a lot this last year, um, just for the student population need. And then um, our plan was in the beginning was to do two days at each each building between Janice, um, our health assistant and I, and then she decided to retire and so I had to clone myself. I need to work on cloning. Um, but no, we are, um, our office staff are great and um they know when to call. And like, hey, this is a little too much, um, come over. And I get in my car and I head to the bridge and the bridge is still out and then I turn around. So, yeah, it's, we try to um kind of forecast as best as we can.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, in the same, now that um Ally's here full-time, um, she can, you know, spread a little bit more um between both buildings.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I know you mentioned this earlier, but the difference, I don't, I don't recall that the difference in the amount of hours last year versus this year was?
So we started with twenty-six hundred and we ended with thirty.
Two, thirty-two hundred, is that?
Yes.
Sixteen hundred, twenty-eight hundred.
Yeah, so thirty-four, thirty-four hundred.
Okay, cool.
All right.
So I, I was just looking at the breakdown on um what was provided here. It it looks like, you know, we had, you know, maybe at Luther, like quite a bit lower. Is that just student need, obviously, or?
As far as the health room visits?
Yeah.
Some of that does boil down to um, reporting the data. So, um, if I'm not here, you know, somebody else has to do it too. So, um, obviously, we don't report every hangnail.
Yeah.
Or invisible boo-boo.
Yep.
Um, but yeah, it's, a lot of it comes from what goes into the system. We have to get it out too.
Makes sense.
Which is, we've kind of, that's, especially since we took over Power School, um, with uh the way we document, we had noticed a trend of decline at times, so.
Yeah. Gives good insight though, I assume, right? Yeah, I mean, i- it's good that that this information was provided. I would have never thought uh we would have thirty-five hundred health room visits. And I'm sure that's, you know, it ranges from very small to, you know, something more major, but um, that is wild to me that that, that number one, that the data exists and number two, that is so high, so uh, thank you for that.
Yeah, you bet.
I I is just really excited that um there was the forethought to make that change with that retirement mid-year to be able to increase actual nursing hours um in reassigning some of those administrative duties that were with the assistants to others. Um, I just think to to watch this report and to have us not wishing for two point oh and having two point oh and seeing you both as much as you are in buildings in different places at really strange times. Um, that's all more possible because of rethinking when that opportunity came through.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else?
And I do have to say that I, yes, I am very biased, but I think you guys are wonderful.
Thank you.
But um, I have heard from a lot of different parents that, you know, once their child does go and see you guys for whatever reason, they are appreciative and happy at the work that you're doing. So I just wanted to let you guys know that the parents do um appreciate what you're doing. They enjoy the fact that they can be called and it's not really a panic if it shouldn't be a panic.
Not an emergency.
It's not, exactly.
Always open with that.
Parents always appreciate that. But um, they have told me, you know, multiple different parents have told me the great work that you're doing. So I wanted to let you guys know that.
Oh, that's always good to hear. Thank you. Thank you. Sure will. All right. Thank you very much.
Both very much for coming today. I appreciate it greatly. Um, so with that, um, we're going to be moving into the instruction um portion of of your agenda. Um, the next item um will be presented by Amy Oakley, our Director of Instruction, as we talk about the potential for high school text adoptions and then she will move into some additional um changes at the middle school for course offerings for next year.
Thanks. So the the advancements I'm gonna talk about this evening are related to our first strategic plan goal of high performance. And we continually reflect on how we can advance um our work to achieve the goal of all schools as well as the district. We'll achieve a State of Wisconsin accountability rating of significantly exceeds expectations no later than the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six report card with evidence of annual growth. So the improvements you'll hear this evening are directly in relation to um our work to achieve that goal. The first um item I bring to you this evening is a recommendation to shift a math program at Fort Eckason High School. Um, the recommendation this evening is to continue to advance the illustrative math program to the Fort Eckason High School for the algebra, geometry and algebra two courses uh starting in the twenty-twenty-two school year. So I'll give you a little background of what brings us to that recommendation. Um, we had have the previous program, or the current program that we're using has been in place for around five years. Um, we had some significant challenges translating that program to an online learning format. So during that time, we had some real disruption to the continuity of the delivery of that program. We also had professional learning during the COVID closure and the following year disrupted from the vendor. So we really had a moment where we had somewhat disconnected from the program we were using out of necessity, as well as an absence of professional learning to maintain the connection to that program and learning, uh, which really brought us to a threshold of, does the timing, especially after hearing about the? which really brought us to a threshold of, does the timing, especially after hearing about the successes that the elementary, which is in its second year of illustrative math, and the middle school in its first year of illustrative math, has experienced? And the idea and the kind of unfathomable opportunity to actually have a K-12-aligned program, which comes with some lovely benefits in coherence, focus, and alignment for students. So when we started having those conversations, we also did so in the spirit of looking at the ACT and ACT ASPIRE results at the high school, really seeking greater growth for our students as well as achievement, and starting to have conversations of whether the reinvestment in our current program was the best tool to get us to those higher growth measures as well as achievement scores. The focus for the team really became a central one of how do we prepare our students as math learners for all college career life readiness goals? And one of the things that the middle school team really spoke highly of with the illustrative math program is the ability for all students to access the learning within the core classroom. And that was something very appealing to the high school staff and seeing the fact that our students are coming more differentiated, especially as our students are older, due to the disruptions from the pandemic. So a couple of things about the illustrative math program at the high school level. It was specifically designed for high school learners. So each portion of the program has been designed specifically for the grade level it represents. It did receive the highest ratings in ed reports for program focus, coherence, rigor, and usability. It is standard, standards, standards-aligned with the strongest score for curricular coherence within and across grade levels. So this should really give us seamless transition between that eighth grade year to the ninth grade year at the high school, as well as for our students who take algebra, the high school algebra course at the middle school. They will then have it within the same program they're leaving from the accelerated path into the high school algebra class in eighth grade. Centered in problem solving with real-world application, we really are a fan of the long-term sustainable professional learning model that they offer, as well as the opportunity that we could do professional learning across schools. So our middle school and high school staff could do professional learning together within the concepts of the program that were not specifically level-dependent. We also have enjoyed the fact that one of the central parts of illustrative math is to provide all students the skills that they need to know, use, and an emphasis on enjoy mathematics. So there's a really nice joy to the learning, accessible activities. I'm really excited about bringing this recommendation to you. And I can answer any questions you might have to, about this adoption.
Do other schools in the area use this program?
I'm not aware of another, I, you know, I don't have a, the, I don't have a precise answer. However, I'm not aware of like Jefferson, Whitewater, like close-area schools. In the, in the interruption of the pandemic, many adoptions in different schools typically have a good sense of where our comparables are in programming, because we do an effort to connect to other schools that use similar programming. We sometimes combine professional learning events. So much has been disrupted and changed. I'd feel hesitant to say for sure exactly which schools are being utilized. But what we have seen is the data that we gathered from the schools that we're using. Saw a nice bump even in the first year that they used the high school illustrative math.
I guess my question is, does anyone in this school use this program?
Oh, in the school district now?
No, no. State of Wisconsin.
Yes, yeah, yes, absolutely.
So this, we're not a pioneer.
No.
Other, other school districts have used it?
Yes. Sorry. Yes and yes, very much so.
Okay.
It's actually, it's actually a national open source product, which is a little bit of a cool innovation that's happening in textbook companies. And so the idea that really high-quality resources that are being curated by nonprofit organizations to create equity and access to high-quality programming. So the entire illustrative math program right now is online, available for free. The only purchase we need to do is consumable resources that we would do to avoid printing on copying machines, as well as professional learning. So it's really kind of a lovely step back from these giant like textbook machines that have very little ability to pivot or make adjustments, because they have print years and additions. And so we get a lot of the documents from illustrative math on, you know, Google Drive. They make improvements every year, which is really refreshing, given that you don't, we've had times in the district where we've adopted an addition. And the year after we adopted, the new one comes out and then you don't have that newest version, because you adopted this version. So this is really a much more organic and like live program that I think will, will really give us some room to grow at the high school, especially considering that we have quite a few new team members. It also felt like a really nice time to dive into new learning together, to also help them kind of reconnect as a team in new learning versus bringing some of the new, bringing the new staff members on when we weren't, you know, super confident in the current program we were in.
And of course, this program meets the state standards.
Yes, yep, absolutely.
And are the math teachers in middle and high school behind this?
Yeah, so we unfortunately, so this program, this adoption went pretty quickly, because this conversation's emerging about we should maybe explore something different came up a little later in the year than we typically do. However, we went through the process, actually, the team started to do some training the day after school got out, because we had previous training scheduled. And so they were desiring to get a jumpstart on the learning, with the hope that the board would approve their recommendation. But felt that it was, you know, not in the best interest to continue to do professional development in the previous program if the intention was to move forward. So we did our first day of training. They really had a great, successful day.
And that was my last question. What does the teachers have to do to get up and running so they can use this program? They're doing it from what I'm hearing.
Yeah, so we started with the first day of training. They have two more days of training in August. And then we have some curriculum time scheduled to making sure everybody's ready for pacing and assessments and all the practicalities and logistics. And then they have ongoing professional learning throughout the next school year, so.
It says two courses. Does that mean two years?
Algebra two is the course.
Oh, algebra two, okay, okay.
So algebra one, algebra, geometry, and algebra two. And we're making the recommendation to move forward with the new program in all three classes for next fall, rather than phase in, just because we believe that the benefits are really urgent to get in place. So three courses, algebra, geometry, and algebra two would have this new program. So we would act, we would have illustrative math from kindergarten all the way through the junior algebra two course in the district.
Okay, anything for seniors?
Well, yeah, we have lots of offering. They don't offer illustrative math beyond algebra two. But we recently have become available, understand that there's some college board advanced placement opportunities with pre-algebra, pre-calculus, which for some students is what they take after they take alg-two and trigonometry. So we'll be, we'll be exploring those options. And it wouldn't surprise me if we saw some recommendations for some new materials for those upper-level coursework coming in next year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So with, with the introduction of any new program, what does that transition look like for students who've been, who've been in the previous program?
Yeah.
What does that transition look like?
Sure. So for our students who are currently in illustrative math at the middle school, the, it will actually be an easier transition than it would have been. For students who are currently in our, in the existing program, so that would be those who took algebra one this year, those who took geometry this year, we would be having, we would be doing an analysis of is there any gaps? And the good news is that the common core is aligned by course and both programs are common core-aligned. So in content, we should be fine. It would be more of the new instructional routines, helping kids get used to the new.
Learning style.
Yes. The, the, the part that we started to inventory was, as people have been supplementing with, out of necessity for either reteaching resources, because the previous program didn't have as robust of resources for reteaching, or they were supplementing because it was continuity of what they had started during online. We, there is even some question of like how much of the current program was happening routinely. So we're seeing this as like a reset, to get reconnected, to make sure that there's equity not only across sections, but with, but throughout sections, so that we are working together as a math department to maximize our impact versus have things be very different based on what teacher you got.
And the data, using this program, the data in the elementary school and middle school has all increased, correct?
Yeah, so we've seen some really lovely results and which is, which is exciting, because as a country, math was hit significantly harder in achievement because of the pandemic than reading. So the fact that we saw any gains this year is, is very exciting. We also felt like at the elementary, even though it was our second year, it almost felt like a first year, because the first year we implemented was less than typical in a million ways. So the fact, so, so we were still working through the logistics of doing the year, you know, for the first time this year. So the next year of professional learning really talks about meeting, meeting students' needs, differentiating to maximize growth, you know, really having teacher decision-making. So it's, it's an exciting year heading into the second, knowing we already have some nice momentum in terms of kids meeting their growth goals and meeting and having some strong achievement. We're very hopeful for the school report card. I hope I didn't just jinx myself. Sorry, sorry.
Right.
I was doing so good until that point.
So there is that resolution, is there?
Yeah, real quick, how, how often is the, are we aligned K through twelve on a program?
I don't think we've ever had the opportunity. Because typically, programs connect only to one level. And kind of, the idea that we could really be cohesive as a one-fourteen is really exciting for us.
All right, we do have a resolution in front of us, if the, if everyone's good with this.
And just as a reminder, textbook adoptions are two reads. So this will be put on the table this evening and then hopefully will be ratified in July.
So be it resolved that the following textbook be placed on the table and considered at the July board meeting, illustrative math, algebra, illustrative, man, that's an easier to say, illustrative math, geometry, illustrative math, algebra two.
I'll second.
Your math part's easy.
Emotion by Ms. Sully, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and those, all those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? All righty, in that pass.
This is just the first reading, no?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we table, we'll table it now and then.
Okay.
And then we do put materials out for public review in the next month. So you'll see those outside of my office. So if anyone from the community wanted to review the materials during the, as they said, they are there on the table until July, so. All right, the next program enhancement that I want to speak to, I'm going to invite Mr. Matt Wolf, the principal at Fort Atkinson Middle School, down to join me. Matt and I are excited to share some programming enhancements that we have in place at Fort Atkinson Middle School for the fall. So I'll, I'll go through an overview of those updates and then we can, we absolutely can entertain questions and Matt can help fill in any areas that he might have additional information to, to add. So we set aside early in the school year to make some scheduling adjustments and program enhancements at Fort Atkinson Middle School for next year. One of the first and primary goals that we brought was to increase the English Language Arts minutes and math minutes for the eighth grade level. So currently, the eighth grade was the only place in, actually, the K-12 system that students only had a forty-five-minute block daily. So that was originally done to help students transition to the high school skinny model, before we were block schedule. So it was really time for us to revisit the idea of creating a, creating, creating an opportunity for our eighth-grade students to have a block structure. And in the plan that we have for next fall, it would be a block structure every other day. So they would have a longer period on one day, a shorter period the next day. What that does is that hybrid model, because remembering the high school has an A-B schedule, so you have a long block on an A day and then you don't have the next, that class on B day. So what we're seeing is going from sixth and seventh grade, where we have a two-period block every day, to eighth grade, where we have a double-period block one day and a skinny the second day, to the high school where you go to a full A-B block schedule. So we really think it's a nice progression to helping students to adapt to that next, that schedule at the high school. Even more important than the schedule component is the opportunity to give us additional time to reach the grade eight learning standards in both ELA and math. As I spoke earlier, we are still navigating some unfinished learning, especially with our older students from the disruptions from the pandemic. The importance of reaching those ELA and math instructional standards in grade eight really sets us up for the foundation of strong scores at the high school and meeting those career and college, career and college readiness benchmarks. So we're very excited about the idea that our eighth graders will have some more time. In addition to the instructional time increases in ELA and math, we challenged ourselves to come up with some new elective offerings for our seventh and eighth-grade students and even the opportunity for them to have more choices. So really, middle school is the time where we want students to explore different academic areas, different interest areas, have lots of opportunity to try things out. So we have some new courses to share with you this evening. We also challenged ourselves to really evaluate all of our current courses, elective courses, to see if there was opportunity to update. So it was kind of like any good remodel. There were some that we brought in new and some that we gave a little refresh, right? And this was made possible with some creativity. One, we moved a health class that was originally housed in grade eight to grade seven. So we felt it was important to continue to offer health at the middle school level. However, moving it out of the grade eight gave that flexibility for that additional time. We also really evaluated, previously, we had a required computers course in grade eight. At the time when the course was put in, the idea of students being introduced to computers and really having computer instruction was, was a really pressing need. Now coming out of COVID where we're one-to-one and classes, students are using computers, we are seeing that shift from a required course to an elective course and an opportunity to revise that course to make it a little bit more applicable to our current students. So one of the areas we're most excited about, and Dr. Abbott referenced this earlier, is an opportunity for us to revise and really reimagine our technology education coursework at the middle school. We, if you had a student at the middle school, in terms of, you saw that we offered some new courses. Initially, in the course offerings booklet that were pending board approval. Those two courses were Introduction to Mechanical Engineering and Design and Applied Science and Engineering. Well, we had just a great interest in these courses and such a, such a positive response that we really started to, upon a opportunity, a vacancy opportunity, started to rethink of whether we could take the concept of those STEM-based technology education courses and reimagine the whole course sequence. So what we did then is take our current technology education courses, as well as collapsing the originally proposed courses that were in the course proposal booklet into a single STEM six elective, STEM seven elective, and STEM eight elective. And, and what that represents is really an updated version of our tech ed classes, a restructuring to make sure that we're using, we're teaching our technology education in a problem-solving, problem-solving format. And really to build on the momentum that we are seeing parents requesting, as well as the structures that more contemporary technology education programs, especially at the middle school level, are doing. So we will, as you, as you think about these new courses, and they're on the right side of this slide, the courses are still being developed. It's our intention to really utilize the staff that will be teaching, as well as the high school technology education department, to continue to explore how best to structure them. We are challenging ourselves to integrate new learning experiences for our middle school students alongside those traditional components that we very much value. So our menu of options in building those three courses will include components of these across the classes, including. these across the classes, including opportunities for engaging in engineering and manufacturing, designing and building models, including having a more robust robotics program, controlling various power sources, which is what yields to our automotive pathways at the high school, introduction to computer-aided design or CAD, construction work in a variety of materials, including wood, metal, and introducing a more structured 3D printing component. And then last but not least, really teaching those foundational machine and tool safety. So we're really excited about these new courses. What would happen is any student that signed up for the tech ed, the original course named tech ed or the new courses, will be enrolled in the STEM, in the correlative STEM course. And then it also now has given students, some students who had enrolled in both, an opportunity to take an additional elective because now they're getting that STEM experience in kind of one package and they can now explore if there's another elective opportunity that interests them. Do, I can answer any questions or Matt, Matt and I can answer any questions you might have about the STEM six, STEM seven, or STEM eight coursework?
Are you confident we can get the teachers for these courses?
Well, yeah, well, this is the, one of the nice, Dr. Abbott talked about opportunities. So one of the opportunities that became available, we've had some, some challenge, technology education licensed professionals in education are slim and hard to find. They're just, it's really a shortage area right now. When you do have a quality candidate, it's hard to find one who is, wants to be at middle school because many of them visualize themselves being in those cap-storm courses at the high school. So one of the opportunities that a middle school STEM program gives us is as long as the content is representative of the standards that also are included in science, which when you do a, like a Venn diagram of the technology education standards for the state and the science standards from the state, there's lots of overlap. So as you think about engineering, manufacturing, designing, building models, and robotics, power sources, computer-aided drafting, you know, construction and thinking about 3D dimensional printing, all of those have overlap. So we're actually able to utilize our current science staff at the middle school. We have two staff members who have a big passion area, three actually. When we shared it with them, they, they almost had a little bit of a debate over who got to teach it.
They're very excited, the whole science department was very excited to, to take this on. And yeah, we had some that really came forward and were like, I'll do all of them, I'll just teach all the classes. But we wanted to divide it up, this can be new learning for all of them. And one of the teachers actually is already enrolled back into school to learn more about these things without our encouragement. He told me, hey, I'm already signed up for classes, I want to learn more of all these things and pursue that, so.
So the answer to my question is yes.
I think that's a really big yes.
That was really subtle. No, I, I guess one of the things you can hear is we're excited about the fact that we feel like this now will finally, the middle school's had a lot of turnover in their tech ed, FTE, the program has suffered. And we're really hoping that this provides us some nice continuity and sustainability to, to bring strong tech ed students to the high school.
So would the classes have to be taken in sequence that they build on each other? So you could take a STEM eight and you wouldn't have taken STEM six and seven. So at any point in time, they're going to address these types of topics?
Which down the road could offer some real flexibility in scheduling. It's really a nice feature of this. And even when you start thinking about multi-grading or those types of things, so it's awesome.
And then so with STEM six, seven, eight, I'm, I'm, like you mentioned before, there is still a line once, you know, they're at STEM eight, then when they go to high school presumably with, with STEM eight, then they, then they can go on particular classes that directly align with some of those that we're talking about.
So the challenge we're giving ourselves is how do we take all of the high school tech ed strands, automotive, metals, manufacturing, construction, to engineering, to make sure that students have had experience so that when they make their choice about which tech ed class to pick, it's more of an informed choice. So in our previous iterations of curriculum, sometimes we were heavier in like the woods construction, sometimes we were heavier in those more like traditional middle school type projects. This will really have a much higher intentionality of getting kids connected and excited about those options and maybe students would even embrace more than one versus only seeing themselves as a construction student or only seeing themselves as an auto student.
I mean, we really see this as a program builder. I, I think there will be greater variety of students interested in additional coursework at the high school down the road. This will really open doors, I think, literally to, to programming later at the high school.
Gives them such a broad base, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we'll be peaking different kids' interests in different places. And I think it's also just important to, to mention that these are approachable courses for all sorts of kids. This isn't, you know, targeting one audience. They are intentionally designed to capture the, the interest and peak the curiosity of all types of learners, which I think again will broaden some of those CTE offerings at the high school as well, so.
And being aligned with the high school and the programs there, I mean, you see engineering and stuff and you think, oh, someone's just going to be sitting at a computer and see CAD someone. So there's a hands-on component of what these tech ed courses have, which I, I think is amazing and fantastic. I love seeing this. When can we introduce it at the elementary school? When can we get everyone hands in?
Well, if you, if you want to.
Like it's so exciting to be seeing this kind of tangible learning at this level.
So if you want to see something similar in action, why don't you just take thirty seconds to talk about the summer offering?
I was gonna say summer school.
Thirty seconds, okay. We are, we have just seen amazing response to our STEAM Academy that is the first week of August. This year's STEAM Academy is take flight and we're going to be building radio-controlled airplanes. So the, the large majority of our students enrolled are elementary students and we are for sure getting questions of how could my student get this during the school year? One of the areas the elementary team is really talking about is when we re, when we revisit our elementary science program, what's really happening in more contemporary science program is a STEAM component that would be right within those science instructional minutes. And that's where I think we could strengthen that elementary, that elementary bill to the middle school STEM classes to the high school tech ed.
I wasn't trying to create an agenda item on your.
No, I'll always take the time to promote summer school, so that's why Rob said thirty seconds.
No, I think it's.
The middle school, the end of August, they call that campus in the mornings. It's, the kids love it. And last year we did underwater submersibles, controlled submersibles, and they was, they loved it.
And I think it was also really energizing for the teachers and staff involved from what I've heard as well, too, really dynamic.
Kids love this. So let me just quick finish out. So the other new course that we're offering is called Introduction to IT, Information Technology. This is a brand-new course which gives stronger alignment to the business education and computer science pathways at Fort Atkinson High School. This would be hardware, software, internet basics while maximizing Google tools. It also is the opportunity to engage in deeper learning regarding computer career fields. So we're really excited about, about that. And I think we recognize the IT field is an opport, is one that would give a lot of our students opportunity in a variety of ways. And then finally, a couple of courses that we're doing some refresh on. The first is our Spanish eight course. We are renaming it the Spanish Culture and Conversation course. Currently, our students had the option of Spanish eight or high school Spanish one. One of the pieces of feedback we'd heard from families is that if they took Spanish seven, that Spanish eight course felt duplicative or had a hard time delineating. So perhaps more students took that high school course than were really ready for that high school course and the rigor associated with it. So what this does is we're going to bring in a greater focus on practical Spanish and contemporary cultural studies of Spanish-speaking countries, eliminating the curricular duplications and then really providing a strong alternative for that eighth grade student that's maybe not ready to commit to that high school Spanish one course. And then lastly, the Computers eight course that I referenced used to be a required course. We're renaming Business eight, again to strengthen our alignment to the business education pathways at the high school. This course will focus on the role of computers in our society as well as in the world of business. This will be the place where students can access keyboarding, different types of communication means, computer graphics templates, desktop publishing, spreadsheets, presentations, website design, and Google tools. So a nice refresh and really giving them a, a taste of what our business ed department offers at Fort Atkinson High School.
I would just say I love the alignment and I love that we're introducing this to kids earlier in middle school. I mean, by the time they're in high school, they've already done, you know, they're already seeing all this stuff. So introducing it earlier and that alignment is fantastic. I love it.
Thanks.
And all of this and increasing minutes of English and math in eighth grade, which has been a goal, believe me, for innumerable years there, so it's really an awesome.
With fewer staff.
Yeah, yeah, with fewer staff, right?
Is there like a collaboration with high school teachers and middle school teachers with these like STEM programs like tech and the, you know, cultural languages? Is there opportunities for them to kind of collaborate, talk to each other and say, well, here's some gaps that I could be, that I would like you to kind of go over to prepare them, here are some things that you could introduce that is not there? Is there opportunity for that for the teachers as well?
Yes, so we, we're really excited about in the PLC structure, those, these teams are six, twelve teams. So remember, these aren't prerequisites to the high school courses. So we really can't assume that they will all have that coming to the high school, but we're really asking the question of, to the high school staff, you know, what would be on your wish list that students would come having more experience with? And they, the, the opportunity this gives to collaborate on authentic tasks because all of these are new curricular work, new potential for new materials, new resources, and really having opportunities about what is, what do the high school classes look like? And in some cases, high school classes saying, wow, if a large percentage of kids take this, I could do this in my course now because it wouldn't be brand new.
Chris, the answer is yes.
Thank you.
I'm really going to have to work on this, Chris. All right, and there's a resolution for the approval of the new coursework.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you so much.
I do know what went into this, so thank you.
All right, we have a motion there that we'd like to entertain if there's no further discussion.
Be it resolved that the following new middle school course proposals for the 2022-23 school year be placed on the table and considered for approval at the July board meeting, Introduction to IT, Business Concepts eight, Spanish Culture and Conversation, STEM six, seven, eight?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Bookta, a second by Ms. Sully, and all those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? All righty.
All right, well, the last two hours have been in strategic plan. I mean, really, when you think of the ground we've covered in the different parts of our organization, a year ago when we were rolling out strategic plan, that was the goal. So weirdly, that's very rewarding, so thank you.
All righty, we'll move on to non-instruction and a discussion on milk price increases.
Yeah, so the board received information from Chris Oswald. All right, it's catchy, I think, from Chris Oswald, our director of nutrition services. We are requesting the board increase on the cost of milk for next year. I think it just goes without further explanation, things are costing more. What is nice about this increase is that the meal price itself will not be increasing, it's the milk component within that meal. So I, I think that's doing our very, very best to meet. And if you look at the information she provided, the amount of increase is pretty insignificant given the percentage of increase in costs that milk has been seen.
Dr. Abbott, I asked this question earlier, are there governmental grants or subsidies that can be applied for to help offset this?
Yes. Yes, Mrs. Oswald has worked tirelessly along with Mr. Demerath in executing all of the federal subsidies and all of the federal programs, which have been evolving throughout the pandemic. So we've actually been doing free feeding, we've been doing community feeding, we've been doing things we never, ever thought we would. And Chris and her team have just done an incredible job. So I can tell you when we're costing meals or when we're talking about anything related to nutrition, we're executing every single thing we can from a government agency as well, so.
All right, any further discussion on milk prices?
I'm sorry?
Any further discussion?
No, no, no.
If there's not.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed increase.
All right, and a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Necrom?
Yes. All righty, next up on the agenda is high school wind turbine update.
Yes, we have Josh Carter with us, our director of Buildings and Grounds, who is going to provide the board with an update and a recommendation related to the wind turbine.
All right, good evening. All right, so today I'm here to make a recommendation for your consideration in regards to our high school wind turbine. I want to first give you some background information on the economics of the turbine, service provider history, repair costs, and to, to discuss the mechanical needs and conditional issues later in my presentation and later slides, which will then lead to board action. We'll save some time obviously at the end for any specific questions that you might have. All right, so the wind turbine planning stages and installation took place during the 2010-2011 school year. Here you can see the economics that were established during that time. The initial cost of installation was four hundred and two thousand, four hundred and forty dollars with energy incentives at, at the time of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-one. The total net cost of our turbine then was a hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Just a, a brief description of a kilowatt hour, it's defined as a measure of electrical energy equivalent to power consumption of a thousand watts per one hour. The annual revenue that the wind turbine would generate at the high school equates to twelve thousand, six hundred and eight dollars per year or an equivalent to a hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty kilowatt hours. This is with an average cost predicted to be eleven cents per kilowatt hour. And after combing through our historical energy data with our current service provider, All Energy Management, the annual revenue does, does average twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. It was expected that there would be maintenance needs due to wear and tear starting in year six. We'll get a little bit more into that detail later in my presentation. The life expectancy of our turbine was thought to be thirty years at the time with a simple payback period of eleven years, eleven point three years. The installation warranty was for a period of five years. In late 2011, our service provider Seventh Generation Systems, who installed the turbine, went out of business less than one year after operation. We then brought on sustainable energy, sorry, sustainable engineering who serviced our turbine needs through the 2013-2014 school year. Due to service zoning, a change in service providers was made again to a company called Kettleview Renewable Energy. They continued to conduct preventative maintenance, needs and mechanical replacements through late 2018. Another service provider change was, was made in 2018 to All Energy Management because of our location, again, another zoning change. And who was available to service, oh, sorry, and who was available to service our area going into 2019, and obviously that's who we're using right now as well. But as you can see, due to no fault of our own, the industry has changed over time and we've had a few different service providers. Here you can see a list of the repair costs over the last decade, which started before the estimated year six from the time the turbine was installed. It was predicted at the time of installation that starting in 2017, we would see a maintenance cost of around two thousand dollars annually. You can see that in 2012 alone, only one year after installation, we accrued nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars in maintenance costs. This was due mostly to the fact that the original service provider was no longer in business and as fine adjustments were needed to the internal mechanicals, those costs were no longer covered by that company because they were no longer in business. Again, starting in 2017 through last year, we accrued costs and maintenance needs due to wear and tear and lifecycle replacements of specific components. This exceeded the predicted annual cost of two thousand dollars annually, starting in year six. So this brings us to our current year. Since March 2022, we have experienced some major issues with our turbine, including an oil leak, broken gearbox, generator issues, among other items that unexpectedly came up. The generator is the heart, to say, of the wind turbine. Without a functioning generator, we are unable to produce energy from the wind for Without a functioning generator, we are unable to produce energy from the wind for the high school. Our turbine has been unoperational now for over two and a half months, and unfortunately, the cost to replace a generator and needed gearbox will cost the district $140,000 to continue operation. So, now I'm going to show you a couple visuals of what's currently going on and what needs to be replaced. This was the oil leak that we initially discovered coming out of the base. This was back in March, coming from the internal gearbox. Here you can see a picture of an example of what our turbine generator model looks like. The inspection of that gearbox led to the discovery of some major concerns with our generator, including, including stress cracks across complex welds on the exterior housing, which requires a full replacement of the generator. Not only was this mechanical, a mechanical concern to keep it running, but it also was a safety concern. This is another image of the oil that we discovered leaking outside the generator housing where the gearbox is located. Just like with the rest of our district mechanicals and systems, we have an aggressive preventative maintenance program to keep these systems operating at optimal and safe levels. This is an example of some wear and tear on a part of the wind turbine that we had to replace, part of the annual maintenance cost mentioned before. You can see where a pin goes through that central hole, that's, that rod is a stabilizer rod, and the specific pin is a moving part. So, as you can see, over time, it created some damage from rubbing against the exterior of that rod, and that's pictured there. So, I think the big question on everyone's mind here is, did the turbine pay for itself through energy savings? And the answer to that is yes. We hit that mark in the second quarter of 2021, where the annual revenue over the previous decade surpassed the net cost of installation. The cost to replace the generator and gearbox again is $140,000. This basically is the same net cost of the initial installation. Due to the current maintenance needs and rising electrical costs, the new payoff date would be sometime in the mid 2030s, pending no other unexpected failures or mechanical issues. So, this brings me to my recommendation that we demo the turbine and cap the base. We would leave the base capped off, obviously, safe, and the current electrical setup for any possible future considerations. Due to the high cost of repair and the fact that the turbine paid for itself during this operational lifespan, it makes more sense to us to economically to take it down. I have received demo bids from several reputable contractors to take down the, the wind turbine, and it comes out to about $200,000 because of labor, crane rental costs, and other extent of work that's needed for the total scope of the demolition. However, with my conversations with All Energy Management, who currently provides service for us, we have worked to get that cost down to $15,000 because they can refurbish and repurpose parts from our turbine, reducing the overall demo expense. Most importantly, the district does not accrue another capital cost with this option. So, this then requires board action. The recommendation again is to demo the wind turbine and cap the base for $15,000, keeping the electrical setup that feeds into the high school for future considerations. This option allows for the turbine to repurpose elsewhere and not scrap that salvage yard. And that concludes my presentation on the current state of the wind turbine, and at this time I can take any specific questions that you might have.
If we approve it, when, when will it be taken down?
We can get it down in July.
Oh, wow.
That's amazing.
Did we look at any options in terms of the base and removing that and taking it all out, just all together?
Not at this time. There are some options out there that we've seen in other locations, not specifically school districts, but in my research, some people have taken down their turbine and then put up like a solar tree. There's obviously the solar field option that we see over at M A T C. And there's some solar sculptures and things out there that are a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, but at this time we have not, you know, dug into that data.
But this provides us the option of kind of doing what we want at whatever point other than the base that's there, everything else to be capped off and it's kind of like...
Right, right. Obviously, the, the primary need is to make it safe and then get the, the turbine down, but then at that point, you know, somewhere down the road, we can, you know, discuss some further options for that location.
Sure.
And just for the public's knowledge, like by base, we're talking about the cement pad.
Correct.
We're not talking about the pillar.
Correct, and, and the, the turbine does go down into the ground, so I mean, there's a, there's a footing, so we would cap that off, and then the electrical fee that goes into the high school would stay as is.
Sure. Yeah, this makes a lot of sense to me, and I would believe that it would be a popular opinion as well. So, this obviously makes financial, financial sense to me, and, and I, I guess I don't see any reason why we would not want to move forward with this unless somebody thinks otherwise.
How did you get it down so much?
So, All Energy Management is our service provider now. They have 150 other wind turbines that they service in the US and in the UK, and they've experienced some similar issues, so they're, they're able to reuse and repurpose the parts. So, there's obviously going to be a little bit of a financial gain for them down the road to reuse those, those internal components, so that's how we negotiated back and forth.
What Josh, I'm sorry. What Josh doesn't know is we're actually going to attrition part of his position based on this. Because the number of phone calls he takes for why the wind turbine is not turning will free up an awful lot of capacity in his office, so.
So, he's teaching the STEM now then, right?
I've got the number two. Has anyone else gotten those calls?
What's that?
About the turbine not working?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I've not gotten the calls, but I've, I've wanted to make the call. I've thought about it before. Why isn't it turning? It's a windy day, what's going on?
Yeah, and I mean, just briefly, I mean, we got to the point where one of the internal card chips that actually communicates to our computer was down, and we've replaced it several times, and so we had our maintenance guy going out there every morning to reset it, and, you know, two hours later it'd be down again.
With such a turnover of maintenance contractors, have you, in your research, did you see that this is happening in a lot of places where a single turbine, where it just didn't quite, I mean, it broke even, but it didn't have the longevity that you expected?
Sure, I mean, this exact model, the company that we work with, they have 150 other, the exact same model generator inside, and they're experiencing those same cracks, same oil leaks. So, yeah, I mean, it is happening. I can't speak to the updated ones you see in those big solar, or I'm sorry, those big wind turbine fields, like when you're going through farmland, those are a lot new, you know, a lot newer of a, a model. But yeah, in general, I mean, obviously over at M A T C as well, there's, was taken down because they as well were experiencing some very, some very similar issues.
And no environmental concerns?
Did M A T C have the same model as we did?
No.
Uh, no, M A T C's was a little bit different model than we had, but it's the same year that it was fabricated and installed. Correct, yeah, very similar motor issues and generator issues, and I'm sorry, what were you?
I was just going to ask, there's no environmental concerns with the oil leak or...
No, we've already addressed that, and obviously when it comes down, we'll also do another analysis, and we actually work with EMC Environmental, so we'll get them involved and make sure everything is how it should be.
I would contend the fact, one of the, one of the ways that we broke even was you and your predecessors and our own local team working on this project as well, because M A T C did not fare as well, both on longevity, nor on even approaching the payback that they were anticipating, which is not commentary other than, I, I think this, this project has been handled well over the years in order to get us to the point that we are tonight, so.
And you said that the start would be in July, and, and what's the schedule duration?
We can get it down completely in July.
If you'd like to see them try to move those long pieces around the back of the high school.
Don't go over the Robert Street Bridge. Or Main Street either, that'll be awful.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion from us.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the removal of the wind turbine from the high school property at 925 Lexington Boulevard.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, next up on the agenda is the inner fund payment from General Fund 10 to the post-employment benefits fund 73.
Yes, there was a memo attached to the board packet that the community could reflect on as well from Mr. Demerath. If you have any questions, obviously Jason is here as well, it's a procedural.
Is there any discussion on this? And remember, this is one that can be read as stated, we don't have to discuss, or you read the whole resolution out. We're really making it pay for that six minutes last time.
You're asking for a motion?
Correct.
So, move.
I'll second.
You really like concise statements.
Yep, and we, okay, a motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, we are moving on to item nine, items for future board meetings.
Yes, so as we've referenced throughout the evening, we'll have another strategic plan update coming up in July. We will be bringing you further information related to referendum information as well as part of that. You'll also be taking another look at the preliminary budget that Mr. Demerath presented this evening. You'll have approval of student handbooks, and I'm sure we'll have some other items for you as well in July.
All righty, and the, the last motion of the night.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education adjourn?
I'll second that.
A motion by Ms. Reynolds, a second by Mr. Rogers, and all those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? All righty, thank you, adjourn at 8:49.